Good afternoon, everyone. It is five o'clock on Tuesday, January 26, 2021, and we're convened for a work session on the Board Budget, fiscal year 21, '22, not Board Budget, but for a budget discussion with updates, et cetera. This will be our third primary major work session on the upcoming fiscal year's budget. So with each one, I know we get more and more information and get closer to what an actual budget may look like. Before I call roll, I just am going to throw it out there. Does anyone have a song to kick us off into a work session?
President Sullivan, this is Gary.
Hi, Gary.
Hi. I feel bad because the last work session, I didn't have a song. So I brought two with me today that I think, you know, presents a decent theme for this budget workshop. And it comes from our crack Budget Office. And one is Budget Now and the other one is Budget of the Future. And for the Budget Now, it's a song that comes from bluegrass genre. And it was covered by Jerry Garcia and The Grateful Dead.
Oh, okay.
And the title is "I Ain't Broke But I'm Badly Bent."
Perfect, okay.
Now, for the Budget Future, a little bit more optimistic. And this one is from Fleetwood Mac. And you guessed it, it's "Don't Stop Thinking About Tomorrow."
There you go. Yay, I think you deserve some applause from everyone.
Thank you.
Of course, everyone's on mute, but yay. Those are great. Well, thank you. So we'll not dwell on the Budget Now song, though how appropriate. And we'll concentrate on putting through our minds the Budget Future song. So thanks, Gary, for that. That's wonderful. So before we move any further, I am going to call roll of Board members with two notes. One, Ms. Munoz and Ms. Smith are not able to join us for today's workshop, so we'll catch up with them separately later. But with that then, beginning roll call, Ms. Bittersmith, are you present?
Here, I am.
Thank you. Mrs. McGrath.
Present.
Thank you. Dr. Norene.
I'm here.
Great. Dr. Thor.
Here.
Wonderful. Ms. Nguyen.
Present.
And with my presence, we have six Board members in attendance for this workshop. And the administrative team led by Dr. Gonzalez are here. So with that, I'm going to move this to you, Dr. Gonzalez, to take us to the next step. Thank you.
Thank you, President Sullivan, members of the Board. I would say those are certainly some good song choices for today's discussion. Before this evening, we have Dr. Jim Moore, who is our interim Chief Operating Officer, and Gary Yakin, who is our district's Chief Financial Officer. And both will be presenting this evening. And I imagine that Gary may have others who participate and ask questions, should the Board have any questions. And I'm pretty sure you'll have questions. So we're all available to answer some questions. So with that said, Dr. Moore, I'll turn it over to you and Gary for the presentation.
Thank you, Dr. Gonzalez. President Sullivan, Board members, CEC members, colleagues and guests, I'm going to sort of set this up for you. And President Sullivan did a nice job. This is a year that we've committed to coming to the Board numerous times with the budget as it develops. And it's really been something that we needed to do because it's been a turbulent year in some ways. But I'm going to go with that Fleetwood Mac song because I'm very optimistic. I'm feeling good about the budget that we're going to present to the Board. It's been very thoughtful. The colleges in the district have worked hard at bringing this budget in line with our revenue. As everyone knows, we consciously had structural imbalances the last couple of years in order to put forth additional effort through the transformation and IT efforts to close some of the gaps in the district for greater student success. But this year, we're really, you know, committed to what we would call a balanced budget. And it's been difficult, but everybody has worked really hard at making that happen. In tonight's budget, you know, we have folded in at the request of the Board, a proposal dealing with compensation. And along with that, a lot has happened since November. Obviously, Prop 207 has passed. And we have better focus on our initial assumptions, which we will review very quickly with the Board as to, you know, why we're striking the numbers that we're striking. And then to add to that, CARITSA, which is kind of the new acronym for CARES II, is showing up on our doorstep and which will be a very positive thing for the district overall. So with that, let me ask Gary to step up and start moving through. There's a lot to cover because we're going to try to do not just our general operating budget, but also our capital. So Gary?
Yes, thank you, Jim. And I'd just like to mention that in addition to the individuals on the cover page, cover slide here that are going to be speaking to the presentation this afternoon, I'd also like to let you know that Ms. Sharie Zara, who is our Chief Financial Planning and Budget Individual, is also in the meeting to help answer questions. So I also hope we can move on to the next slide. All right, I'd like to quickly start with the roadmap for today's presentation, go through it quickly, give you a sense of the things that we would like to cover. And as Jim said, there's a lot in here that we packed in. So we're going to start with just a very short review of our FY '22 budget theme and then a few general fund data points as reference, particularly for our two new Board members. Next, we've updated our revenue and expenditure assumptions for the FY '22 budget. Some things have changed, some things have not changed. And then following this is a very brief look at investment potential for beyond fiscal year '22, the opportunities to move the district and our colleges forward. Dr. Paul Dale will be making this presentation. And then next, we were asked in November during our second budget work session with the Board to come back with options for employee compensation. So we intend to present compensation in two parts. The first part is a cost of living adjustment through fiscal year '22. We'll present this part today. The second part is a longer term compensation plan, which is being developed by the Human Resources Division. And that will be back for a presentation to the Board by late March. And then moving on to Proposition 301, we've updated our projections on that. We have a slide to go through on that one. And then we'll close with a discussion of capital needs and a brief look at the expenditure limit capacity that is being eroded and has been eroded over the past several years. So if we can move to the next slide, please. So again, this is a review. Our overarching theme for the FY '22 budget is to move toward a structurally balanced budget for the general fund. General Fund is our largest fund and the one that affords the greatest flexibility for spending. So what does a structurally balanced budget mean? It means ongoing investments do not exceed ongoing revenues. It means that one-time resources, like balances, are matched with one-time investments. And if we achieve those first two goals, it means that we will avoid contributing to future budget deficits. And we'll be able to create a sustainable budget into the future. And embedded within the theme of a balanced budget is maintaining a safety net to meet unexpected contingencies. And our target is to have at least 16% of general fund continuing revenue and expenditures untouched in the bank and unavailable for allocation outside of an emergency. And I just mentioned that the 16% target represents about two months of our operating expenditures. And that's a pretty good reference point for us right now. Next slide, please. So very quickly, this shows where our general fund revenues come from. And what this is, is a snapshot from this year's budget. And as you can see from the chart, we have two main sources of ongoing continuing revenue. They are property taxes, which comprise about 75% of the general fund ongoing resources. And then the second largest is tuition and fees. And I'll talk about the history of how this has changed a bit. But in the FY '21 budget, tuition and fees comprised about 23% of our ongoing revenues. Then we have some other minor revenues that enter into the general fund. But property taxes and tuition and fees are the biggest. So next slide. So, composition of ongoing revenues in the general fund. And I mentioned I would talk about how they've changed over time. And if you look at the chart, the green bars are property taxes. The magenta colored bars represent tuition. And the red bars, state aid. And I note that the red bars drop after 2011 and then disappear entirely in fiscal year '16 as the state eliminated state aid for Pima in Maricopa County Community Colleges District. So the key takeaway from this graph is that over time, as enrollment has declined and revenue from tuition and fees declined, the magenta bars, the general fund has become less dependent on tuition revenue and more dependent on property taxes. And you can see that since 2012, as a source of general fund revenue, tuition has declined from 35% to 23%. Or property taxes have increased from 62% to 75%. And this has implications for the expenditure limit as we'll talk about at the end of this presentation. Next slide. Okay, moving on to expenditures. No surprise here, our expenditures are largely composed of personnel and employee benefits costs, which make up about 73% of general fund budget expenditures. Contractual services constitute about 10%. And other operating expenditures, utilities, supplies, materials and the like account for about 15%. Next slide. Okay, historic enrollment. This is a story that we're having to deal with today. And we have been dealing with over the past several years. This chart shows the history of full-time student equivalent counts, or FTSE for shorthand, from 2010 to our projected enrollment in FY '21. And if you look at those farthest bars on the right, that shows our assumption now that we expect that we will be down with respect to enrollment this year, fiscal year '21, from last year by 15%. So the bars also show a steady decline for the past 10 years since 2011, with only a slight bump that was registered between fiscal year '19 and fiscal year '20. It was about a half percent increase, but then dropping off the cliff this year, mainly as a result of the pandemic. And while we've seen this steady decline over years, we're optimistic about the future. We've built in a small increase in enrollment and subsequently tuition and fees into the FY '22 budget. And we would expect even more enrollment to enter into future budget decisions as we move out into the future. So next slide, please. So I'll quickly go through our revenue assumptions for the general fund and some of the other funds. As I mentioned, we have not changed our assumption decline in tuition and fees for the entirety of fiscal year '21. We expect that to maintain to be down 15%. The fall semester was a little bit more than 15%. Spring is looking to be a little bit better. But when you blend it out and average the fall and spring semesters, we think we're right at about 15% decline for the entire fiscal year. We expect a gradual tuition revenue increase for fiscal year '22 and beyond. We're starting slow and conservative with a 1% increase in fiscal year '22. New property taxes from new construction will contribute $13.4 million to the FY '22 budget. These are continuing revenues, ongoing revenues. Proposition 301 revenue is ahead of projections. So we've increased our revenue projections for Proposition 301 remittances to us. And then, as Jim mentioned, Proposition 207, the Recreational Marijuana Act, is projected to contribute our share of about $9 million by the end of this calendar year. And we would think that that's probably going to double in calendar year 2022. And that's a continuing revenue source as well. And then, as Jim also indicated, we have our second stimulus allocation. It's a huge number. It's almost $100 million. This is one-time money with the idea that it would be spent in the course of one year, although it could, that could be extended for another year with an application. And Kim will address this stimulus money in just a few minutes. Next slide, please. Our expenditure assumptions. Okay, the big one is we are recommending that we reduce total operating budgets for the FY '22 budget by 3% overall, total, for the general fund. And that that budget reduction will be spread differently among the colleges and the district office. And I do have a slide later on to show that differential reduction by college and for the district office. The next bullet really goes with the last bullet, which is the cost of living adjustment. But we plan to shift $7.6 million from the general fund to Proposition 207 account. We're not planning any new budget expenditures beyond mandatory expenditures for fiscal year '22. We have about $2, $2.5 million of those that have to be made, things like ASRS increases, and there are a couple of others. With one caveat here, and that is that we are bringing forward for the Board's consideration, cost of living adjustment for all employees. Future budgets will lead to structurally balanced budget. This will be achieved, we think, no later than fiscal year '24, possibly even in fiscal year '23. And then, our spending this year is lagging what we have in the budget. So we're building more of a balance in this year's budget. We still have a number of months remaining in the fiscal year. So that will change almost on a monthly basis. And then finally, cost of living adjustment is being offered here for the Board's consideration. And we have structured it as a revenue-neutral proposal. Next slide. Okay, this slide, this graph, shows why we're focused on balancing the budget and creating one which is sustainable into the future. And if you look at the red line, the red line shows general fund budget expenditures from fiscal year '17 through fiscal year '21. And also projected for fiscal year '22 and '23. The green line shows the same for revenue. And if you look at the right-hand side of the graph, you can see that sharp dip in the green line between fiscal year '21 and fiscal year '22. And this is due to the 15% loss in enrollment and tuition. If you go back to the left side of the graph, in fiscal year '17 and fiscal year '18, the graph shows a balanced budget. You can't see the green line, it's covered by the red line, but they're equal. And so we have expenditures equal to revenue in the past. And then if you look, go forward and beginning in 2019, the red line jumps above the green line and continues above it through fiscal year '21. During this period, we budgeted more expenditures than we had in ongoing revenues. But the increased expenditure was a concerted effort on the part of the district and the Board to expand investments in the transformation project and technology to improve student access, student success and experience. And it's with that new investment, it was envisioned that future revenues would also improve over the long term with improved enrollment and completion as a result of these investments. However, in the near term, a budget deficit or an imbalanced budget was created. And this was made worse by the pandemic as our tuition declined significantly. And so the recommendations for the FY '22 budget are intended to get back on a balanced track. So if we can move to the next slide? Okay, I mentioned previously that we are asking for a 3% budget reduction in the general fund across all 12 business units. And so... But before I go into this graph, I would just like to digress and say a few words about revenues. And we're talking about expenditures here, but I also want to say something about revenues. Since revenue enhancement is another tool in the toolbox for balancing the budget, so it would also be possible to close the gap by increasing property taxes or tuition, which are the two revenue sources that the district can control. However, given the underlying economic uncertainties over the next year, we thought it most prudent to focus on lowering expenditures rather than introducing additional taxes or tuitions, at least for this year. So getting back to this slide on the expenditure reduction, what it shows is the allocation of the proposed 3% reduction, which totals $20 million. You can see that in the bottom right-hand corner. And to allocate it among the 12 business units. These reductions, if you look at the 1, 2, 3, fourth column, varied percent reduction. These recommendations came from the college presidents, which include smaller reductions, as you can see, if you look at that column, for three of our colleges, Chandler-Gilbert, Estrella Mountain and Rio Salado. To make up the difference so we could achieve the overall 3% reduction target, the remaining colleges and the district office would contribute more. And it also point out that the differing reduction targets for the colleges really parallels efforts to equalize funding among the colleges. Those colleges with less historical funding would be required to reduce their budgets less in this budget round, lower than the 3% and 3% plus that the other budget units would be required to reduce their budgets by. Okay, next slide. And I know I'm blowing through this pretty quickly, but there is a lot to cover. We need to be done. So looking at this graph, it's similar to the graph that I showed below. But if you can imagine, look at this graph and imagine it looks like a pelican. And Ms. Bittersmith, you might have read cases from your time as a utility regulator with the duck graph that the utility industry uses. But the picture looks like a pelican. I'm going to describe the graph by the body parts of this bucket. So if you look at the body of the pelican, that is from FY '17 through FY '20, it looks the same as the previous graph. But then moving on to the neck of the pelican, you can see the red line bends downward. And that represents our 3% budget reduction. And then if you continue the red line out, it increases a little bit into FY '23 due to mandatory expenditures that we envision would be necessary and required in the FY '23 budget. But then we flattened it out into the future. So if you look at the bill of the pelican, the far right, you can see that the green line, representing our revenues, has now risen above the red line. And that gap in between the green line and the red line is what the resources, the ongoing resources that we have available for new mandatory expenditures and for new investment. So with that, I'm going to turn now to Dr. Paul Dale for the next part of her presentation. So, Dr. Dale, take it away.
Yeah, Gary, thank you. And next slide, please. I must admit, I've never followed a budget presentation by the description of a pelican, but I'll do my best to rise to that occasion. This is an opportunity to kind of jump to Gary's second song about "Don't Stop Thinking About Tomorrow." And on behalf of the 10 college presidents and the system leadership, I'd like to spend just a few minutes helping the Board members think through what it might look like to state a case for new investments. And we know, as Gary said, we know that our current budget, we must close the deficit between revenue and expenses. And at the same time, just look around us. The Maricopa County is changing, the workforce needs are changing, the student needs are changing. We have continued programs that we want to implement. And as Gary noted, we are projecting, hopefully in the near future, an opportunity where revenue will exceed our annual obligations. And while this budget presentation is really focused, as Gary and Jim have indicated, on FY '22, the Chancellor was very clear in talking with the college presidents and with the district leadership that we wanted to share a message that we are constantly thinking about the future, about the needs of our students and about business and industry in the future, even in the context of this budget, where you just saw a slide where each college is going to be experiencing a budget reduction. So with that, can we move on to the next slide, please? So over the last couple of years, the college presidents and the district leadership have aligned our work. And you will find that most college strategic plans are aligned to these three, if you will, buckets. And I'll just read those real quickly. Ensure high levels of student success, equity and excellence in the student experience. Cultivate a more responsive pipeline to fuel the local economy by meeting the needs of business and industry. And then lastly, achieve a sustainable competitive advantage by building a great place to work through improving organizational operational effectiveness. So again, we wanted to share that with you because, again, all of our work and much of our work around guided pathways, fields of interest, have really been focused around student success. You know, much of the work around our improvements in meeting workforce needs is focused on the second bucket and so forth. This slide here shows, and I'm not going to get into specific detail, this is just merely more for illustration purposes. I will tell you, though, that these initiatives come from great thought from the college presidents and district leadership in terms of when we have an ability to invest more to meet the changing needs, these are the kinds of things we're focusing on. And quite frankly, the things we're working on right now to deploy once a revenue position changes. So a couple of examples under the first bucket is the Vice President Councils, along with district IT, are working on two wonderful software projects to support our guided pathways and fields of interest work around case management advising and software to support scheduling. Again, as we want to address that enrollment decline, this is a critical initiative that will scale up the work that our academic advisors and student affairs folks are addressing. Additionally, modeling after the good work that Mesa Community College started, we know that in order to increase access, and I know Dr. Norene has mentioned this a number of times, the key role is to embed more of our academic advisors in high school. And in this case, we could fund, in this budgetary example, about 37 new positions across the district. Moving to our second, if you will, strategic priority, a number of us sat in on a GPEC presentation today and really talked about the workforce needs of the Maricopa County and the state of Arizona moving forward. And it really, in some cases, has been dramatically impacted by... impacted by the pandemic. So three quick examples here, we know that there is a growing need for allied health workers in medical laboratory technicians, physical and occupational therapy assistants, home health rehabilitation aides, medical insurance coders, just as an example. So an investment at this level would generate almost fifteen hundred new program slots for our students to get into this area. Again, as shared in the GPEC presentation today, clearly there is a growing shortage of nursing, and we feel that we could expand up to seven hundred fifty slots for new nurses. And then lastly, one of the items that was also shared today at the presentation is that the one job family that's going to require the greatest amount of re-skilling for those workers who have lost jobs is in the area of IT and cyber technology. And with an investment in that area, we could generate over seventeen hundred new annual enrollments, again, in IT and cybersecurity. The last one, in terms of build a great place to work, I think you'll learn more about that as you hear more about the COLA projections moving forward. But again, as the chancellor asked us to do, is, again, the budget is a reflection of our current behavior in terms of how we allocate resources. But he asked us to continue to think deeply about as new resources become available, as we reallocate individual internal resources, and as we create greater efficiencies, these are the kinds of investments that we want to make as college presidents to move that one line of the pelican further up in terms of generating more revenue with tuition. So thank you, Gary, and with that, I'll turn it back to you.
Well, thank you, Paul. So also, if we could move on to the next slide, employee compensation. And just as I mentioned earlier, we were asked to return with ideas on employee compensation in the near term, and with a plan for compensation over the longer term. And I'm going to move, let's go ahead and move to the next graph. I'll move through these next ones fairly quickly. This one just simply shows how Maricopa cost of living adjustments have lagged inflation. And you can see that cumulative over time, the blue line is the inflation index, the green bars are the cost of living adjustments for our employees, and that gap, cumulative gap by nineteen twenty, I'm sorry, twenty twenty, reached nine point three one percent. Next slide, please. Okay, this slide just shows how employee contributions to ASRS have increased over time. They've increased slightly but steadily over the past few years, but rather dramatically in the history going back to fiscal year two thousand five. And I'd just like to say that while the mandatory contribution to ASRS reduces take-home pay for employees, we're not suggesting that the, you know, the board compensate employees for these contributions, but for the employee, in current terms, these increases feel like a loss in purchasing power. And it just simply adds fuel to the income erosion fire that we're trying to calm with a cost of living adjustment. Next slide, please. All right, now we're getting into the nitty-gritty here. And the idea is that a four percent cost of living adjustment, which would be a significant adjustment for employees, you know, we can find the resources to do it, and I'll have a slide on that in just a minute, to actually implement it retroactively as of January first of this year for the rest of this fiscal year, at a cost of ten point one million dollars for all employees. And then full year, that would be effective July first of this year for fiscal year twenty-two, would be double amount. So if the board desired to put it in to place retroactively as of January first, the total cost through the end of six thirty twenty-two would be thirty, roughly thirty million dollars. Next slide, please. And if a four percent cost of living adjustment were to be implemented, that differential gap would close significantly by about forty percent or so, from nine point three one percent, down to five point seven nine percent behind the rate of inflation. Next slide. So how are we going to pay for it? Well, here's a slide that tells us how we're going to do it. And again, we're proposing a revenue-neutral approach by delaying some expenditure transfers to the general fund and using fund balance to cover the half-year this fiscal year if the board would choose to implement this cost-of-living adjustment retroactively to January first. So the half-year would be covered by our fund balance, which is growing this fiscal year, since, as I mentioned earlier, our spending has been below our budgeted expenditures so far this year. Covering the costs after June thirtieth into fiscal year twenty-two would require some permanent adjustments. First, we would delay for one more year, moving MCOR expenses, with the exception of the leadership position in MCOR. We would delay it, that move to the general fund for another year, and that would contribute one point three million dollars toward the cost of living adjustment in fiscal year twenty-two. Next, we would postpone moving to the general fund four of the thirty-nine faculty positions currently funded by Proposition Three Oh One, that's about a half million dollars. We would utilize ongoing revenue from Proposition Two Oh Seven, and this would be a big shift, to fund the skill center, and that would contribute seven point six million dollars to the cost of living adjustment. We could utilize two million dollars of unallocated transformation balance in the general fund to contribute to the cost of living adjustment. We could transfer half million dollars in MCOR revenue, they do generate some revenue from Fund Two into Fund One, to contribute to the COLA. We could fund the Phoenix College Tech Institute, at least for the next year, for FY twenty-two, from our Proposition Three Oh One balances, because we are now generating more revenue than we had thought from Proposition Three Oh One remittances. There would be no enrollment growth formula for fiscal year twenty-two, we've substituted the three percent budget reduction for that, so that would save seven hundred thousand dollars. And then there's some leftover new property tax revenue from new construction, and we could apply seven million dollars in new revenue, unallocated new revenue, to fund the cost of living adjustment. So I'm sure that there'll be many questions on this, but to move through the presentation, what I'd like to do, President Sullivan, if there's no objections, is to introduce Kim Grignio to move into the CARISA funding.
Okay.
Kim?
Yes, thank you, Gary. Good evening, President Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Gonzalez, members of CEC, colleagues and guests. I am Kim Grignio, and I'm the Associate CFO and Controller for Maricopa. I will quickly share, and Elsa, if you can actually go to the next screen, please? Thank you. I will quickly share the information currently available on the second stimulus package approved during the pandemic. The Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act, or CARISA, was approved by the federal government late in two thousand twenty, and allocations were published by the U.S. Department of Education on January fourteenth under the Higher Education Emergency Release Fund, or HERF funds. So we've called those HERF Two, is kind of the general idea. With the allocations, there were some very high-level frequently asked questions, but we anticipate more detailed guidance or regulations to be issued in the coming weeks. While there are similarities between the CARISA funds and the CARES Act funds, the CARISA legislation appears to bring some expanded uses of the stimulus funds. First, the allocations continue to be split between direct student support and institutional support, although not at the same percentage. The amount spent for student award grants is at the same dollar level as the CARES Act allocations, those first bucket of funds we received. However, where the CARES Act required fifty percent of the total allocation to be spent on direct student grants, the amounts under CARISA range anywhere from seventeen percent to twenty-two percent for our colleges. We basically have to spend the same amount out of the CARISA funds that we had to under the CARES Act funds. So the average for all of Maricopa colleges in total is about twenty-one percent will be required to be spent on those student awards, and that is a minimum. The further differences from the CARES Act include allowing student grant awards for distance-learning students, which is a great relief to our Rio Salado students, they were excluded under the original CARES Act funding, and the apparent allowability to offset expenses due to lost revenues, also something that was not allowed under the original CARES Act dollars. Expenses are allowed back to March thirteenth of two thousand twenty, which was the emergency declaration, and it has also been stated that any expanded uses under the new CARISA program do apply to any unspent balances of the original CARES Act funds. And again, there are still many details to be worked out and clarified, and we're eagerly anticipating additional information from Department of Education. Next slide, please, Elsa. Allocations under CARISA were calculated based on each school's help population, head count, and distance-learning population, and the combined total, as Gary referenced earlier, for Maricopa colleges is just under a hundred million dollars, at ninety-nine point nine million. Next slide, please, Elsa. This slide provides the allocation by college and delineates the amounts required to be spent on direct student support at a total of just under twenty-one million dollars, with the remaining seventy-nine million eligible for institutional expenses or additional direct student support as we choose. Next slide, please. These next two slides will provide an overview of the numbers for both the CARES Act and CARISA allocations combined. This first one depicts the student aid portion of our colleges' allocation. As of December thirty-first of two thousand twenty, just over twenty million, or ninety-six percent of the twenty-one million awarded, has been spent and provided to students. If we add in the CARISA allocation we just received, there's about twenty-one point eight million available for additional student grants under the expanded allowable uses. Next slide, please, Elsa. This last slide shares that thirty-six percent, or seven and a half million, of the institutional portion of the CARES Act funds have been expended as of December thirty-first. However, much of the thirteen and a half million available has been planned out and even encumbered by the colleges. Add in the CARISA allocation and encumbrances aside, there's about ninety-two point four million available, again, with the expanded allowable uses. And we are, again, looking forward to additional guidance or regulation in the coming weeks to fully determine the allowable uses of the funds. And next slide, please, and with that, I will turn it back over to Gary to talk about capital. Thank you.
Okay, we're making good time here. We're closing in on the end. Capital, a very important area. And also, if you could move to the next slide, please. Board members, you saw this slide back in November, and what it shows is our capital dilemma. If you look at the red bars, that's our balance after expending to meet our needs based on resources that we have on hand. And you can see that by fiscal year twenty-four, with no continuing revenue source to support our capital needs, we run out of money. And we do have large capital needs, as you recall, the deferred maintenance study that was performed identified some five thousand projects to bring our facilities up to speed at a cost of three hundred eighty million dollars. Obviously, without going out for bond, that has to be taken off in chunks over a period of time. And without any ongoing revenue source, it presents a dilemma. We do have a solution, however, and the board came up with this solution several years ago. And Elsa, if you would move to the next slide, please? And it was a mechanism to shift secondary taxes to the primary taxes as we paid down the two thousand four bond issue that the district did, and to dedicate that shift, the amount of the shift, to capital. And we can do this while still decreasing the combined primary and secondary tax rate. And as you can see, we're then able to generate sufficient ongoing revenue, and we can generate quite a bit, because as we pay those bonds down, there is headroom to shift money into meeting our needs. And so Elsa, if you would move to the next slide, please? And this just simply shows that over the next number of years, until the bonds are fully paid down in fiscal year two thousand twenty-seven, we can generate some seventy-five million dollars by doing this secondary to primary tax shift, while also reducing the total combined tax rate that property owners would face. And this is going to be important and critical in being able to move our colleges and districts forward and to remedy all of the problems that we currently have identified facing outdated facilities and facilities for which we have deferred maintenance on for a number of years. Not to say that we may have additional needs in the future to accommodate shifting student population with modern, having modern facilities available, and there's quite a bit of expense that we would envision out into the future to meet all of our needs. So with that, let's go ahead and move, Elsa, if we could, to the next slide. And very quickly, this just shows the trend and what's happening with our capacity under the expenditure limit, the constitutional expenditure limit. And as you can see, our capacity, our remaining carry-forward capacity is being reduced rather significantly over time. And the principal reason for having to utilize our carry-forward capacity to stay under the expenditure limit is because our enrollment has declined and our tuition has declined. The formula for the expenditure limit generally is a function of changes in enrollment and inflation. And as that lags, we become more dependent on property taxes, and we are not able to exclude our tuition revenue from the expenditure limit. And that is what's cutting into our carry-forward capacity, and by fiscal year twenty, probably twenty-five, at this rate, we would be out of that rollover capacity and in need of relief, otherwise we would be in violation of the expenditure limit. We did present a few months ago, a full presentation on expenditure limit, and I'd be happy to bring that back with updated estimates if that's the board's desire. So with that, I think, President Sullivan, we are at the end, because I think the last slide just simply is one for questions.
Thank you very much, Mr. Kinto, and for the team that presented the material. A couple of things, board, I'm speaking to you first on this issue. We have to convene an executive session at six P.M., which is in less than ten minutes, just about ten minutes from now. I expect that there are significant questions, since there's quite a bit of material in today's presentation. I'd like to suggest that maybe we have time for one or two questions before we need to exit this work session and move to the executive session, but I'm wondering about your thoughts on having a more give-and-take exchange based on today's presentation at next week. We're already scheduled for a work session on monitor- We're already scheduled for a work session on monitoring next week, and we could certainly build some time out for a more robust discussion on today's presentation, and at that time, we would have been able to bring Ms. Smith up to speed in a presentation of this material to her, to invest her. So a couple things, one, your thoughts on that, and is there any one big question that we could ask that we might have time to have answered for us today? And normally, I go through the roll call, but whoever speaks first, you get the mic.
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, wait a minute, heard of Mrs. Sullivan.
Let Linda go first.
Okay, go ahead, Dr. Thor.
It wasn't me.
Go ahead, Ms. Bitter Smith.
Okay. I have one very quick question, and I can ask for it to come to me later. I heard Gary mention lots of capital expenditures. At some point, it doesn't need to be this evening, it would be helpful for me to understand with a little more detail what those are, whether they're simply building maintenance, or whether we're talking about technology equipment, or all of the above. So when Gary has an opportunity to get that information to me and the board, just kind of a general overview of that, that would be helpful.
Thank you. There is a background to this as well as than what is being presented today. So Gary, when you are framing the answer for Ms. Bitter Smith, could you also refer to the past report that laid out those 5,000 projects and potential?
Absolutely, happy to do that.
Thank you.
Okay. Is there another pressing question, or do you have thoughts about a more robust discussion with some give-and-take next week?
And I would just second that, by the way, more robust, at least for me, as a new board member, that would be helpful.
Yeah, I don't think you're alone in that. I mean, there were some significant things that were brought up today, certainly the issue of the equitable 3% cuts, or whatever those are, percentage is from 2 to 3.75. But I think the compensation piece might merit some discussion, but am I missing something else, board members?
I just think we're going to need more time, and this was a lot of information, so I agree with your assessment that we should add some more time for next week.
Other thoughts, folks?
Mrs. Sullivan?
Yes, Dr. Gonzalez.
I'm sorry, I believe Dr. Thor was going to ask a question.
Dr. Thor.
Well, I was, I was, thank you. And this doesn't have to be answered now, but I was curious, on Slide 25, why Scottsdale Community College had no expenses under the CARES institutional allocation. Like I said, it doesn't have to be answered now.
Okay, got it. We'll get that answer to you, Dr. Thor.
Any answer regarding any of these financial aspects, it would be great if they would be answered for the full board.
And, Miss Sullivan, or President Sullivan, what I was going to also suggest, that in the meantime, between now and next week, I would invite any governing board members to forward us any questions in advance, and we also look forward to those at the meeting, and we'll be happy to make sure that we're prepared to answer them and give you the response that you're needing to make an informed decision.
Okay. Thank you for that suggestion. So I think, board members, if we can frame those questions, you can send them to Elsa's email, and then those would be forwarded to Mr. Kinto, and we would, we can all be made aware of what the questions are, we just can't respond once those questions are sent, and then we can have those as part of the discussion. And I'm really disappointed that we don't have the time to really get into some of these things that are top of mind today, but Gary and Jim, I think you, and Kim, you've presented a lot of key information for us to digest, and granted, this is our third workshop, but now we're really beginning to see a deeper framework for the budget, and I think I would like to allocate then probably an hour on top of next week's. We have some key things to do next week, so it'll be an important meeting, but I think it's imperative that we have the time to ask these questions and have answers that we all can hear the answers, to which we all can hear the answers. Does that work for you, Dr. Moore, Mr. Kinto, Dr. Gonzalez?
Yes, this is Jim Moore. Yes, of course, we'd be delighted to, you know, to flesh out, if you will, some of the thinking behind all of this, and some of the things that led us to frame the whole budget the way it is framed.
Okay, so we will, go ahead, if someone...
Ms. Sullivan, it's Linda Thor.
Yes.
If we're adding an hour, I'm, personally, I hope we're adding it at the end rather than earlier in the day, as that would create a conflict for me.
Yes, we will need to do that. Our availability is based on others' work calendars, which is why we're tending to start a little later than we might have in the past. So we'll, I'll take a look at the timing with Dr. Gonzalez for that meeting, and we'll lay out all the elements of next Tuesday. So board members, I know, again, it's one more meeting, one more day, but we had planned to hear from the monitoring board and have some discussion there, and we can add this, and there might be one other item for us to take up that time as well. So it'll be a robust evening, and we'll start in the late afternoon, so stay tuned. So again, thank you, and I'm going to adjourn the work session, but board members, what I would like to remind you is you have an email that will give you a connection to an executive session, because we need to exit out of this work session and reconnect for the executive session. At the conclusion of that, we will exit out of the executive session and rejoin through another link to the regularly scheduled board meeting. So it's step one, two, and three. So we're done with step one, so now we're going to move to step two, so I'm going to adjourn us, and I'll talk with you in two minutes through the other link. Thank you, thank you, everyone.